At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order here on Tuesday, September the 16th. And I'm going to start this evening, I'm going to pass a document out, four to my right and four to my left. There's five.
Okay.
And I'm going to, I'm going to begin this evening by reading a proclamation because this year, our nation celebrates the 275th anniversary of the drafting of our constitution. And next week, well, this, this, tomorrow is the beginning of that constitution week. And I was, earlier today, had the opportunity to meet with the, the local chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution who were celebrating today and presented this proclamation there, but I wanted to do it this evening for the citizens of the community to, one, be aware of it and for us to celebrate this important milestone in our nation's history. So let me read the proclamation as follows. Where it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 275th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, now therefore I, Kenny Weldon, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Stevieville, Texas, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Stevieville, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. And so if y'all just join us in that this coming week, I think that's a great milestone for our country and, and how blessed it is that we are living in a nation where we got through the revolution, that seemed like the hard part, but then getting the document together to preserve our, our freedom has been, been fantastic. Also want to mention, later tonight is the kickoff of rodeo. We've got the parade on Saturday, rodeo heritage week kicking off in the community, you can see the banners around town. So we've got that, that to look forward to in the coming week is the Cowboy Capital of the World, us hosting what will, if it was like last year, it was like going to the National Finals Rodeo without having to go to Las Vegas because all the, all Cowboys and Cowgirls were able to stay home and compete in their own backyard and get, there was a couple of folks that qualified for the NFR for the week of our rodeo. So it was a pretty exciting time and, and it was a show like this town has never seen before. They had the sound man from the NFR that was actually putting on the production. And so if you, if you haven't seen it or had an opportunity to get out there and see it, the 26th, 27th, and 28th of this, this, this month for that. Okay, the first thing we've got on the agenda tonight is an economic development presentation. And, you know, I really want to applaud the work of the Planning and Development Committee. A lot of times, we get in the, in the throes of budget time and we get focused on one thing. And I think what, what tonight proves is this, this is a council that's, that's able to juggle more than one ball at a time. And I think that's, that's encouraging because it, it means that we're, we're moving, we're moving forward. I also want to thank some of the members of our, our economic development partners that are here tonight, from Steadco and the Chamber for being here to join in and listen to this presentation. I know we've got some folks that have come from out of town and I'll let Jerry introduce them here in just a second. But, you know, Steadco has done a tremendous amount of work within, within the community and, and as well as the Chamber as the city, but I think we all recognize that we've got work to do in this area. And we live in a, in a time where one-trick ponies don't draw a crowd anymore. And so for us to assume as a group that we can individually create economic development, I think is a misnomer. And what we've got to do is find a way to create partnerships. And those partnerships between the city, the county, Steadco, the Chamber, Torrelton, Ranger, all can come together in, in special ways. And so I, I just want to thank the, the folks that are, are with us tonight for, for the opportunity to, to participate as we, as we hear for the first time this presentation on economic development from the city of Roanoke. And so with that, Mr. Warren, you want to introduce the guest?
I'll hand over to Boyd Wagner.
Okay, so Mr. Wagner.
The, one of the, I'm smiling about somebody, somebody was going to give three reasons for something and couldn't remember it, but two of them, but anyway. One of the reasons I ran was economic development. And if you don't believe that, you can look at the literature that's, that's in there. And so we were required, I think, I don't know if we were required, I went to a seminar anyway. And Roanoke was there and they, they were talking about economic development. And these two that were here now, we're, we're talking about it. And what immediately impressed me was that their town is less than half our size, 8,000 people versus 18,000. Our sales tax is about 5.3 million. Their sales tax is going to be closer to 14 million. That's almost three times ours. Their property tax is lower than ours. If, if our sales tax was as high as theirs, we could eliminate the property tax and still have more tax money. Now, I'm not saying we can do that. And I'm not saying what they're doing is exactly like our situation. And it's not necessarily apples to apples, but it's, but they've got, they've learned some things and it's pretty close. Anyway, I, I've, I've been up there three times. I wonder if they're, right after that meeting on Saturday, I went up there on my own and went through some of the restaurants and then I went up there against my brother and then I went up there to meet with them. So I think they know what they're talking about and I, I think we can learn something from them.
Okay. So at this time, we've got, just make introductions and go from there.
Well, thanks for having us out tonight. I'm Colleen, my person. I'm the mayor from Tim in Roanoke. I grew up in Roanoke, so I'm a long resident there. I've been on our city council since 2002. I have served on the executive board for our COG and I'm also on the board for TML Region 8. Actually, where I'm at, as Boyd mentioned, I do a lot of training for newly elected officials at TML. That's something I really enjoy. And, and this is our city manager, Scott. Scott's been with us about a year and a half now, our new city manager. So we're excited about having Scott and he's lived through budget with us now, so he's really good and ready. But yeah, we're excited to be here. And this, I'll tell you, this is my favorite story to tell, this is truly growing up in Roanoke, I really have seen all of the changes. And it's been a really fun, exciting, and still is, because we saw so much growth going on. And Mayor, you mentioned about a partnership and I'll tell you, first thing, economic development is about partnerships. It's about partnering with individuals. It's worked out working with your chamber. It's about working with the county. It absolutely is about partnership. It truly is. And what we're going to share with you guys tonight is kind of our story and kind of how we came to be where we are today and tell you a little bit about our experience. I'll tell you, we in Roanoke have a Type A and Type B Economic Development Corporation. We, we had, we, B came in in 98 and then in 99, we adopted the Type A. And you'll hear us throughout the presentation talk about a 4A or 4B. That's what it used to be called, so we still call it that. It is technically now called a Type A, Type B. So we'll, we'll talk a little bit about that, kind of where we, where we are and here where we're going. I'm going to turn over to Scott and I'll just jump in.
Yeah, appreciate the opportunity. I do want to share some specific information about some of our economic development projects. This is a presentation we've given in a couple of different instances. You want to skip through some of these slides, so I know you guys got a big agenda tonight. Budget is fine and he'll take away from that.
Come join us.
Just in case you don't know, I wanted to give you some idea of what we're talking about if you have not been to Roanoke. That is State Highway 114, running east and west here, and Highway 377, which is State Highway going north and south. To give you some perspective, this is I-35 coming through Fort Worth. If you're a NASCAR fan, you may have been at this facility up here a couple times. That's motor Speedway. And we're about three and a half miles up from that facility. And that is something, just kind of want to put them, so we do try to capitalize on a lot of economic development we created and crowds that come out there and we do try to capitalize on. We just wanted to give you an idea of what we're doing.
Where's your golf course?
They don't need that. Just, just some quick demographic, we're about 8,200 population. Boyd said, you can see kind of how we've grown since 1990, but that last point, what we're trying to point out, we try to take advantage of all the sales tax dollars that come into our city that are money that's paid for and given to us by other people. Takes the burden off that property tax. We're about 50,000 people in Roanoke during the day. And we think that, when you talk about economic development, it's very, very important. I'll, I'll talk a little bit about this, but if you've heard of Roanoke, you've probably heard of Babe's Chicken, which is the original, Babe's Chicken Dinner House. And it was kind of catalyst to some of the things we've done on Roanoke. It's drawn.
Yeah, absolutely was. I mean, and this is, as Scott mentioned, this is the original Babe's. We still claim that. We want to make sure everybody knows that, we're the original. However, if you weren't ever there when Babe's very first came, there was nothing there at all, just Babe's. And we had a crowd that waited two and a half hours routinely to eat there. And as our sales tax dollars started generating, became more fruitful and it, it started becoming really more, we had money to do things. But we lived in our downtown and we had some good growth outside of town. We had a Walmart that came in and our Walmart's done very well. Obviously, the NASCAR track helped that tremendously. But we had, we had some sales tax dollars and we kind of got to talking about our downtown and thought, you know, we really should do something with this. We didn't really have a destination place anymore. You know, when I grew up there, everybody went to the ball field. Well, the ball field is a school now, so there really was no community place where everybody could go. And so we had Babe's and we just thought, you know what? We gotta, we need to do something with this crowd. So we started talking, this is, this is what it looked like when Babe's came down. Well, Babe's was there before we started the road. What year was this?
About 96.
Okay, 96 and this is today. But that's, that's where we started. And, yeah, nine restaurants down there. And I'll tell you, we have used our 4A and our 4B to go capture these restaurants. We are, okay. And we, we utilize those dollars. Yeah, the Rock Hotel, which is just down from Babe's, it's on the same side of Babe's, that actually was the very first thing we did on that Oak Street corridor. Even before the road went in, there was a gentleman that lived in Westlake, which is a neighboring city of ours, who owned this building. And he donated it to the city with the caveat that we would refurbish it and that we would rebuild it. So kind of as a council, we put our heads together and decided, and we don't have, we don't have a cool downtown like you guys do. So this is what we had left and it truly was a shell, the back wall was blown out, it was terrible. Anyway, he donated it to us and the city rebuilt it and it's our visitor center now. And we were able to use A and B money to do that too. But for us, it was kind of our statement to our citizens and to the business owners in our little downtown area that we were serious about it and we were going to put our money where our mouth was about redevelopment down there. So we built that. One cool thing about that building too, there's a bank building right across the street from it. And that actually was a saloon in the brothel and it had a hotel upstairs. And the story is, is that the bank across the street is the only one that Bonnie and Clyde did not rob. And it was because her family had money in it. So we think that's a proven history. We don't know if it's true, but we're going to go with that. But yeah, because it'll tell you a little bit more about kind of how we got to where we are with it.
And I think this is part of y'all's right, most interesting. We, we did do the Type B Development Corporation in 98, followed it up. These are both, were separate elections, were separate efforts, but they're both tools that are available. And I'm not going to read all this to you, this talks about some of the things really directly out of statute that you can use those funds for. And I'm going to talk specifically about the dollars that that generates for Roanoke here in a little bit. But I think the most important part of this is it talks about repairing and replacing infrastructure. And that infrastructure can be, those improvements can be used for anticipated business entities or areas. And that's really what the whole concept behind the road is. You're going to build this infrastructure and make this an attractive street and if you build it, they will come. And that's what that money will do. And then again, and if you look at this and you talk about potential of doing a Type A or Type B development corporation, get with your attorney, figure out what all the hoops you got to jump through to make that happen and what that money can be used for. But again, there's just some less things that you can do with that money. And it all, and I always focus on these things for expanded business enterprise, things that are necessary to promote or develop newer expanded business. That's what the focus is on in Roanoke and that's what we do there.
We're trying to figure out how to do the people.
This means the mediation, yeah, that's, that's in the statute. And I'm going to talk specifically about some projects. Same thing, this is just, and y'all have a copy of this presentation. One of the things we did do that I think is important, and I'm not sure how much sales tax room we have available to you, things like more than we talk, we may have room for half a percent. But we've got half a percent of the 4A and 4B. If you don't have that, I think you got to sit down and look at what your needs are, kind of what the vision is here and determine which corporation would be the best for you if it's something you're looking at. But what became available to cities a few years ago was the building of the Fashion Ordinance so that anything your Type B development corporation can spend money on, which is a wider umbrella typically in the statute, that your 4A can spend money on the same things. And you had to take specific actions to do that. And our council did that because they wanted that available to look at funds so they could then all pull back. Let's talk about some specific projects, and this is kind of hard to see. We want to talk about some of the specific deals we made and then we'll wrap this up. Twisted Root Forever Company, the first one to come to us and Holly to lead this project. But they actually went out and recruited this business. They had a vision for what they wanted to see in downtown. They heard about this particular tackle mission and they basically went out and kicked the pushes and ravel cages and tried to get people in.
I think the, the need that I have this too, and Mayor, you mentioned this about partnership. Well, we just, we knew when we were going to do the road and we started on the roadway just designing this whole stretch where the, where these restaurants are. A couple fraternity brothers purchased this land and there were one of them was, there had, there was a house on one of them actually. They purchased this, this land because they, they wanted to do something. They didn't know what it was, but they saw our vision and they got it. So they, they were, they were, they came to a lot of our meetings and just sat and listened to us. And they had been to Twisted Root in Dallas and they invited myself and our city manager to go to Twisted Root. So we went out there, actually had lunch there and we went in and we were like, this is cool. This is, this is what we want. Now, this was way prior to unique diamond capital because we didn't know what we were, we didn't know what we were going to do when we grew up. We didn't know it. We knew we needed to do something. So we went to Twisted Root, sat down and visited with him and with the, the property owners there and collectively decided we needed them in Roanoke and we needed to figure out how to get them here. And so we did offer them some, some incentives to come. And he actually brought two restaurants. And one of them was Twisted Root and then the second one was Cowboy Chow. And this kind of tells more about what we did. We gave them $150,000 for each restaurant to come, but we put some, yeah, as you can see, there was some parameters set within that. The Twisted Root had to be open before the road was finished. And so that was really, that was really important with the road going in. So, and again, those are pretty aggressive numbers to, in dollars amounts to be giving out, but we just felt like that's what we needed as our catalyst to kind of get, get things going. And I will tell you, we recruited that money the first year. It, it, I mean, it was, it was, so once that came, it was a no-brainer. And the, the beauty of the Type A and Type B, and I'm sure you guys all noticed, is that it's, it's money that people coming into your city spend. It's not necessarily your dollars out of your citizens' pockets. It's people who come in, spend, spend money and go home. And that's amazing because you can do things like this. So that tells you more specifically about that. And those were the very first incentives that we did. We do, what we do, free A agreements on these. It's very important to have all the tools, use all the tools in your tool chest that they, that they, they will allow you to. It's good to, to do that.
And these were, I could, because these were, this was a combination of Type A and Type B. They each contribute $75,000. And the beautiful thing about it, as Holly said, they have performance management, they have to make. We got that money back with, that's a loan that's basically forgiven over a four-year period if they satisfy a certain requirement. And yeah, this is more specific, but these are sections, as you look at this, this presentation later, those are the sections of the statute that I think you should focus on. Get with your attorney, talk about what can we do, what tools are available to us. These are the sections of the statute that are most important. Heart A Barbecue is another one, and one of the other restaurants that pioneered this area. If you like barbecue, this is the place to be. One of our heavy hitters.
So where was the original Heart A Barbecue?
Right here. Right here.
They do great. I think it was in Brady, Mayor, but. Very similar deal. 4B came in and I think in this case, Holly was a hundred.
That one closed.
Same kind of five years.
Just got to correct you.
Worked out.
Paper Mike, thank you.
Same thing. Same thing, sections of the Act that we used to draft that agreement. And this is our new company. This restaurant's going to open probably in about two weeks. Some Matt's Rancho Martinis, if you're familiar with their product, they started in Austin. It's a family-owned, it's on the third gen, fourth generation of Matt. Now, they actually started, I think, kind of in 1940, it was a cart in Austin and they opened their own restaurant. The same deal. One of the big differences though, the amounts are much different. This was about a $40,000 incentive specifically to Matt versus some of the ones that came in and pioneered the area. You get to a point where you just don't have to do as much as you have to come. There was an interesting dynamic to this, and there's kind of two agreements for this, this situation. The land where this building now sits, our 4A Development Corporation purchased it. And they basically used that as an incentive to the developer to come in and develop this restaurant space. And they will pay us back for the land, that was about a $400,000 purchase. They will pay us back for that over an eight-year period. And then we did the, the additional agreement with Matt because that is, as Holly said, we want certain type tenants on our Oak Street. This is not, you're not going to see a big chain restaurant. That's not what we're looking for. We want to keep it eclectic, we want to keep it unique. And this is the kind of restaurant we're trying to do. This one has turned out to be a really good story because it feels very confident we'll get the money back to that land much sooner. Developer finds themselves, sell a building, pay us back that money in one year versus eight. So, and then that's just more money for us to do some of the things that we're going to do. Very excited about it. Bob Armstrong, yeah, yeah. And just real quickly, and we'll wrap this up so you guys can ask questions. This is just a ten-year period showing what our sales tax is doing. And as you can see, it's a good picture. If you like the graph, you'll watch 2009 and 2010, everybody hit that little law, as you know. I'm sure y'all felt that in your sales tax. So that's the only points you see, see it's going the wrong way. And again, the development corporations will benefit throughout this entire night too. And so their funds are being built. That 11.56 in 2013, specifically 2014, we're looking at closer to 13 and a half million. Okay, that's Boyd's. So that's a good story to tell. Just quickly, this is just sales tax right now. We approved our budget the other night, put $6.8 million in our general fund for sales tax and then split the other half between top and bottom. I put this right here, if those, those lasted three, three point more of that money, we wouldn't have available, those tools that we couldn't use if we had not incorporated those two corporations. And I just, I think when you've got a max sales tax that you have available, as Holly said, that's other people coming into your city to spend money. That takes the burden. They have not had a rate of the property tax over 18 years in Roanoke. And I think it's because of this. And just real quickly, because we are the unique diamond capital, I want to give you some perspective on what the restaurants on Oak Street really do. And this is just Oak Street. This represents the nine restaurants we talked about. Their total annual sales is about $15 million. And that is huge indication of what that does to a city. We give about $150,000 to our general fund each year and we have $75,000 in that corporation. That's pretty significant dollars. They don't even employ the property tax. They do not employ the shops that are up along Oak Street, that some of them do very well. Also, just to get back to the restaurants, I'm not sure, $150,000, I want to tell your staff what, what that does. That's a couple of positions and that's paying some serious problems. So we're, we're, we're pretty excited about that. And that's all I've got. But we wanted to give you time to ask any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions?
First of all, thanks for coming. I know it's quite a drive, but appreciate you coming down here. Couple things on your publication here, I'm assuming the EDC, one of them produces this, correct? How many do we publish, mail, print, distribute a year? Any idea?
You know, that's interesting. It's, so much is done electronically now. I found, we, we print a couple of thousands of them with every couple.
But you don't tell how many emails though we're sending and other types of websites and online.
I don't have those numbers. It's typically when someone comes to us, everything they want to turn to a package is electronic. We have that in. We do take those to Vegas with us when we go to the ICSC show and the Dallas show. We have those, finding more and more for us. And I shouldn't be saying many voices, it's just more about.
Sure, sure. Cost effective. But I think it's a great publication though, and it's got information online and this is the same. And I think it's important that y'all put the facts in. But the daily traffic count, we're, we're positioned quite similarly to y'all in that our daily traffic count far exceeds where our population is. The second thing is, let me give you a softball question. Where would Roanoke be today without 4B or 4A tax?
We have Babe's. Probably would be just what that slide was.
The first slide he showed of 96?
Yes. Also, we built a 38,000 square foot recreation center that has been funded heavily by that 4A and 4B. And one beautiful thing about that too, and I, we have, we're in morgues, our council seats are in morgues. And I've been in the older part of town, which is historically all the voters, but they're all your senior citizens. And when we were doing Oak Street and they were kind of squawking about the traffic and they just, you know, really, and we just redid our library and our senior citizen center. I always like to remind them that we were able to redo that senior citizen center and they also utilize our recreation center for free. And that they wouldn't have those amenities and they couldn't use, we wouldn't be able to do that without our sales tax. So we, we would be glad to.
Well, thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it.
Other questions?
Yep. We have asked a lawyer by the name of Jeff Moore to come down here and explain the legal ramifications. Do y'all know anything about him?
Yeah, Jeff Moore is actually our city attorney. He, the other ground law master, he worked for the AG's office. And it's, and as you said, if you ask anyone around the state who knows anything about economic development, they say, ask Jeff Moore because he is, he's just, he.
Technical wise, I skipped over really bad.
Those are his.
We'll add every point though.
He is. And the nice thing about Jeff too is that he's no bones about it. He's not going to tell you what you want to hear. He's going to tell you what it is. So that doesn't.
Other questions? Sure.
Did you have to have an election in, to reclaim the sales tax? Was it?
Yes, you will. You have to do that.
I don't mean about forming the, the Economic Development Corporations. I mean, was it being used for property tax abatement at the time or?
No, that, that was just a campaign for sales tax anymore. Yeah.
Okay, other questions?
Yeah, we have a quick question. Walk us through the structure, your economic development structure within the city. You're obviously the economic development coordinator. And is there all those requests that come in? When you go out and recruit and solicit a business, how does that process work? When do you go to the council?
Yeah, and it was very important to the council, and I'll very much speak for this, that my position as city manager was kind of the lead all down. It served as the economic development.
Yeah, and for, for us, it makes sense in Roanoke. It makes sense for our economic development director to be the city manager because to me, it all goes hand in hand. I hear, as I mentioned, I do a lot of training for TML and I've heard so many horror stories about the city council fighting with the Economic Development Corporation and this struggle, which is so silly to me because really you should work in unison and that 4A and 4B are appointed by the council. Because to me, it all goes hand in hand. I hear, as I mentioned, I do a lot of training for TML, and I've heard so many horror stories about the city council fighting with the economic development corporation and this struggle. Which is so silly to me because really, you should work in unison, and that 4A and 4B are appointed by the council. So, it's kind of, I, that's scratching why they would appoint people that they can't get along with, but they do. But at any rate, so as we mentioned, Scott is our economic development director, and we do have a council member on each board. And the beauty of Scott being our EDC director too, is when he gets to recruit, he already knows what we're gonna do. And he knows what's gonna fly, and he knows what won't. And that's nice for us as a council, so we don't have to hear a lot of things that we know are never gonna, never gonna, you know, come to fruition. And I think for us, the way we go and recruit is we, particularly on Oak Street, we go somewhere gold, somewhere we like. We might reach out, the gentleman that I was mentioning earlier that did Hardin and all that, they're the ones also that we partnered with on Matt's. We would go to them and say, hey, we, we like this restaurant. Let's go talk to them. And that's really what we do. And the nice thing about, again, about being so closely meshed with our 4A and 4B is nobody wastes time on things that are not, they're not gonna happen. And that's, that's, as a council, that's, that's amazing.
I do have one, yes, and I do have one complaint about the city of Roanoke. I tried to eat at Twisted Root Burger one night, and I couldn't get in the place. I just want that to be, I want that to be on the record, City Secretary, please.
Did you address certainly?
I have a couple of questions about the motivating incentives. I was wondering if you could tell us about the, excuse me, fast track permitting and the partial slash full permit fee waiver.
Yeah, absolutely. I think fast track is a term you hear a lot, and it's basically just reflects, when we get people through the process, we basically tell, we have two meetings a month, we have two P and Z meetings a month, we have two council meetings. A lot of cities in Texas still only have one P and Z meeting. That's basically just our way of saying, we will get you through that permanent process. It's expeditions with the possibility of getting, it means calling a special meeting, and we are very upfront with the developers about that. Because timing is so important sometimes. They'll come in and say, look, I've got all my financing in place now, everything, the perfect storm has occurred, and I can do this now, but I can't wait. And, and that happens sometimes. So, we just get them through the process, basically, on. And what was the second part of that?
Uh, partial and full permit fee waivers?
Correct. We'll, we'll often time go to the council and say, as part of this incentive, we would ask the youth to agree to waive part of their building companies or impact fees. So, we like to put that out there.
Sure. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to thank you all for coming down, coming down here, and I wish I could leave and go with you and take you to dinner, but I gotta stay for a tax vote. But you can go over to Greer's where we met a while ago, and you know, he came from Roanoke. You can tell him that, that guy from the city council said he'd pay for your stuff over there tonight.
I, I, if Councilwoman, I just would like to ask one quick question. It's obviously you've had great success, and I applaud you for that. Is there any focus in Roanoke on median income or industrial development that increases your, your salaries? Or do you already have a median income that just has people ready to go buy stuff? And do you, do you worry about, or do you even think about industrial development or?
We have a good amount of industrial development. As that earlier slide showed, we have a good portion of, yeah, that's the second one, of Alliance Airport. And by Alliance Gateway, so we do have a good amount of industrial. We're, we're landlocked, so we, we figure our population will probably max out at about twelve thousand, probably, we'll probably, so we're pretty close to that.
Do you, excuse me, do you know what your median income is right now?
Seventy-five to eighty.
Okay.
So, I, I will tell you, and I, we were talking about this on our way down here. If you looked at where, and I probably need to update this again, but if we did a license plate study, I would bet you that seventy-five percent of what we capture in sales tax dollars is not people that live in that area.
Right, okay.
This is, this is the Alliance Gateway area, and this is incredible at the long range for us. And we do, we've done a couple of deals even in the last year and a half, that had Hillwood Development out there, a lot, a lot of great projects. On Hillwood Development building in your city is a very good one. We've got millions of square foot buildings out here. And, and that all occurred before Oak Street, most of that occurred.
Okay.
But the tie-in is so great, because a lot of these places, most of them don't have cafeterias. That, that's the recruitment school we use, is Oak Street. When these guys come see us and talk about building a building, we say, look what we have offered all of your employees. And we've got new subdivisions on here that are a little more upscaled in our, in terms of price points, a little higher price. So, if you've got spots here coming online now, that are good, the executive teams are gonna move along. We just feel like we've tried to, but we've also got housing in town that's more affordable for those that aren't the executive level groups on, on those buildings.
Okay, all right.
This is a very strong tax base for our end.
Okay, well, great. Well, thank y'all very much for, for coming over here and enjoy Greer's this evening.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, and before we leave that topic on the agenda, Mr. Willie DeYoung has had a request to, to make a presentation, so Willie?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Willie DeYoung. I am current president of Stedco. And we really did come out here to learn more about, you know, all membership driven. We are, don't have a lot of the advantages from the, the money standpoint that those taxes, that those tax options do give. But one thing I did want to make a little clear is that what Stedco has been doing, is doing, we were responsible in getting one point six million dollar, we're manufacturing skills development fund from Texas Workforce Commission. Work with our manufacturers. We did that through Stedco Ranger College. That's where that money had to get bundled through. You know, we've done the SWOT analysis with the builders in order to help bring some apprehensions that the builders had to the city, in order to help streamline, much like folks here in Roanoke just said. Streamline and make it more possible for a builder, when they got that financing ready, they are ready to build and get that done. So, we brought that analysis to the city administrator, I guess past city administration. We helped fund the startup of that Builders Association. It's now ongoing, it's standing on its own two feet. The hundred twenty-five thousand dollar grant with Ranger that actually was in the newspaper this morning, and we're really proud of that. Kerry Schindler's here from Ranger College, and you know, that came about in the same, same type of things. There was a need for a certain segment of our population that wasn't going to attend a full-on RN program at Tarleton. They, we saw that need, that need was articulated to us, and Ranger College was able to step in and fill that need. And if you drive by the old Piggly Wiggly, I have to say no more, because that's a beautiful little campus that they have built there, and a great toho, toho onto much greater things. You know, we, we've learned those things through demographic studies that we even have ongoing today to help us target the companies that we, the manufacturing companies that we would like here, to, to attract here. To build the primary jobs, which is really Stedco's focus. Stedco's focus is more on the manufacturing side as opposed to a, a tourist driven thing. I think it goes with our ranching and grassroots environment that we have here. We have a lot of things. We're outside the non-attainment zone with our air. We're still close enough to DFW. We have major rail service coming through here. And all of those things are strengths that are, that Stevensville brings to us. Another thing that we are actually working very closely with Tarleton on, and it's a business plan competition, we're still trying to put all the details together for this. But the focus of that is to try to get, it's, it's competition on a business plan, and it's not just Tarleton students, it's open to the community also. And some of the stipulations with that are going to be that those businesses are actually opened up in Stevensville or the county to, in order to participate in the private money. And so, we're working with Tarleton right now on that plan and idea, and hope to announce that in the next three weeks. So, there, there's, Stedco, we've done anything really lousy, has done a lousy job of advertising ourselves. We have been out there. We are this city's biggest cheerleader. We do work closely with the chamber. We want to work closer with the city, and that's ultimately our goal. And I still think a partnership, to me, of the business community and the city, the county, Tarleton, Ranger, and others, is what's going to bring a focused economic development to the state, and you'll be right down.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you for your time.
Any, any questions for Willie? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, again, I, I want to thank both groups for being here tonight and, and talking. You know, the council's very interested in, in trying to chart a course moving forward. I will mention one thing for the council. I heard yesterday about the LBN program at Ranger. There, there was a bunch of LBN candidates that were there, that were asked, how many of them were gonna pursue their BSN at Tarleton when they graduate? It was a hundred percent yes. So, what we're seeing, I think, is, you know, people enter Ranger College because of where they are in life. Maybe they can't afford, or their grades aren't where they can get into a BSN program. And so, it is a launching pad into a, a unique partnership between Ranger and Tarleton, and I think that's just fantastic to see that moving forward. As, as we work together as a community. So, a lot of, a lot of great things out there. So, thanks, guys, everybody. Anything else on that? All right, we're ready to get on to business then. Item three on the agenda is to consider our tax rate for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. And I'll turn the floor to Mr. Savin to give us a quick synopsis of that.
Thank you, Mayor. In your packet on page one is an ordinance, proposed ordinance, which generates a tax rate, or will be, if it's approved, we'll approve a tax rate of forty-nine and a half cents per hundred dollar valuation. We heard a presentation last week by Jerry Lee of what our certified valuations are, and that in round numbers, I believe we had one billion, five million dollars, give or take a little bit, in appraised values. Then he comes back and says there's some additional revenue that's likely to occur, and I think the number he gave in round numbers, I believe, was thirteen million dollars. Is that correct? And so, the question then is, and I think we've had some folks on the council ask, I think, Councilman McDaniel asked, McDonnell last week asked about lowering the tax rate to forty-nine, right? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Instead of forty-nine and a half. I just did some quick numbers, and Walt and I have not discussed it, so if you want to talk about that a little bit. I'll just make some estimates. I'm gonna guess that the valua, increased valuations generate about fifty thousand dollars in, in revenue. Is that what we talked about last week?
That's, that's correct, Councilman Savin. I talked to Jerry Lee after last week. I bet fifteen million dollars on the protests, we had thirteen point four million dollars in, he is David Suttl. But I bet thirteen point four million dollars, that's not all gonna be taxed for.
How much exemptions are there on that?
I don't know. He had no idea at this point in time. We'll know more in mid-October when he does the correct tax law.
Okay.
At this time, I cannot really accurately answer the question.
I just, I just did some quick, Mayor, just did some quick numbers this, today. I shared those with you earlier today. If that thirteen-four is, say, seventy-five percent, we collect seventy-five percent of the taxes on that, is nine, nine point seven million dollars. That'd get us evaluate, additional valuations of, or not valuations, in tax collections of forty-eight thousand dollars. So, which is what we were estimating last, or last week or two weeks ago when he made his presentation, about fifty thousand dollars. And a half cent reduction in the rate would also produce about that same amount of money in reduction, so it'd be about a wash, give or take a couple thousand dollars. So, with that in mind, are there any questions about tax rate?
Any questions for Mr. Savin?
Or, or for Walt?
Or for Walt?
He is the man.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Mr. McDonnell?
I respectfully move the tax rate of forty-nine cents.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McDonnell, seconded by Ms. Zachary to adopt a, a tax rate of forty-nine cents. Any discussion?
Mr. Savin, can you tell me that the proposed tax rates, how much were we using out of reserves to run the operation?
It was about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Two fifty?
I think that's correct.
That's not the number I remember. It was closer to five hundred thousand, if I remember.
It might have been. I don't off the top of my head remember. Alan, I could, I could look that up, but I don't have it off the top of my head. But if you'll remember the reserves, that, what we were taking out of reserves was, we took an average, no, we didn't, we took a trend line over ten years of sales tax increases. And we did a estimated sales tax increase next year and keep going forward, and next year, if provided there's no other increases in our budget on sales tax alone, we'd get back to flush. Because most of that increase was due to pay raises for the employees, the pay adjustments.
The salary adjustments.
Was the biggest, the lion's share of that.
If I remember correctly, you used up the majority of those projected sales tax increases for the next three years, right?
I think the next five.
Next five.
Well, that's, that's not true, because we, we're paying it down in two and a half years, so for the next two years, it eats up all the sales tax increases. You're correct.
So, the, 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 the war on taxes are a basic source of revenue if we choose to do any additional street programs or anything like that for the infrastructure improvements.
If we decide to increase the budget to do that, that's correct. You know, this year, we did do some reductions in expenses as well. You know, I know that there's been some comments that, you know, you can't, you can't reduce your taxes without reducing services. And we haven't reduced services. We've cut some expenses, and I think those about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is what we've reduced. So, but, but your ans, the answer to your question is correct. If our sales tax for the next year and a half to two years is gonna be eaten up by the pay plan that we approved about four months ago. That is correct.
Any other questions?
I, I did a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Savin, so we're looking at a wash here, of course, as I stated, fifty thousand dollars if we were not, if we were to accept the proposed tax rate. I mean, do we have that allocated, or could we allocate that to certain projects or other departments that?
Sure. Just in the presentation I made last week, or the week before last, we talked about the budget. You know, we have about eight million dollars in sewer projects we need to do, about a million dollars a year in street projects we need to do. And there's other things we could spend money on. There's no doubt about that.
Are there certain projects, though, that that fifty thousand dollars could adequately address? I mean, obviously, eight million dollars in sewer project, fifty thousand dollars is not going to do a whole lot. But are there projects that we can think of that fifty thousand dollars will be a fix in that area?
Well, one of the things we did approve in this budget was about fifty thousand dollars for an economic development jumpstart, and that would basically fund that. That'd be one example where you could just trade off dollars.
Okay.
Which is, goes back to what Alan's comment was, it, you know, reduce the, the money we have to take from our excess revenue.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'm not a pro, proposed a, a reduction in the property tax rate. I mean, I don't think you might appear as. The size task of concern is that, you know, we're not actually, I'm not saying we're not adequately meeting the need of our city, but of course, there's lots of things we could be doing and we need to be doing, we're not doing. And I mean, fifty thousand dollars is obviously not going to break the bank either way, but I hope if nothing else, it just, this creates the enthusiasm and really spotlights the need for our city to have a 4A or 4B tax structure like we just presented. So, we don't have to have these discussions about a half a cent on our property tax rate, because that's just a discussion, in my opinion, so that's it.
Is this just for questions or also?
This is discussion against the motion, toward the motion.
Okay. In September of two thousand and thirteen, I think this council voted to raise the tax rate from forty-eight and a half cents per hundred dollars to forty-nine and a half cents per hundred dollars. That vote was five to four to do it. The four people that voted not to raise that are still on the council. And at the time, one of the three reasons, I think I can remember all three of them that I ran, was that I thought that, I, let me say, I am not opposed to all taxes. I've, I've never, you know, you gotta have taxes, and all of them need to have a practical basis. But that one, I felt, was, was unnecessary, and the four people that voted not to raise it thought it was unnecessary. If it was unnecessary then, and we raised it when it was unnecessary, then we don't need it now. I don't know what's changed, and, and if anything has really changed to make it now necessary, I'd, I'd kind of like to hear about it. But I'm inclined to go along with the, the motion to reduce that, reduce that one cent raised by what Mr. McDonnell has, has moved for, to cut it back down to, I guess that's forty-nine cents per hundred dollars.
Mayor?
Mr. Savin?
One of the reasons, I was one of those that voted against it last year, and one of the reasons I voted against it was, there wasn't a spec, we had passed a budget, and the way, the way that the budget process happens in Stevensville, I think is backwards. We create a budget, and then we go try to set a tax rate, which what we do then, by doing that, is we say, we're gonna spend this much money, so how do we get, it's gonna make that much money then through taxes. Rather than, like the state does, it says, here's how much money you have, so therefore, we'll set your budget based on that. You adjust your budget based on how much money you're gonna get. We do that backwards. So, we've got a budget that's based on forty-nine and a half cents, that's four million, nine hundred, out of property tax, is four million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, I think. Is that right, Walt? Something like that?
Four point three million dollars for general finance, five hundred eighty thousand dollars for.
For debt service against those, against loans, against those operations. So, we have a budget at four point nine seven seven million. Our tax rate would be forty-nine and a half cents to do that. and a half cents to do that. We have been told that we're going to get revenues, additional revenues of some amount of money. I just estimated nine, nine and a half million dollars, which is about seventy-five percent, about fifty percent of the money that Jerry had talked about. And I think that's probably reasonable, which means our increase in revenues, fifty thousand dollars above what our budget is. So, we would have the ability to roll this back without an addition. I think it's, obviously, it depends on how much Jerry, how much, how much the tax assessor collects. But my estimate's going to be about twenty-five hundred dollars negative. We'll lose about, we'll go about another twenty-five hundred dollars in the bank. Now, the other part of it is, and I, and as part of the strug, struggle I've had ever since I've been on the council is, what we call, have called reserves. There is no requirement for reserves. We do that because that's what a, that's what a competent, conscientious business would do, is have something to operate on in case of an emergency. And we've determined, the city council determined, that's about, what is that, Walt? About three point two million dollars, I think. It's, it's basically three months' operations. We have right now six point two million, six point four million?
Uh, I don't have it, I lost it. In the general fund, we're budgeting three point one million dollars, uh, three months' reserve.
So, we, we have about, give or take a little bit, three million dollars in the bank. My only concern, what we've done in the past is, we just kept putting money in the bank, and we raised taxes based on, well, you know, our revenue thinks it's going to be this. Well, the last two years, we've pushed really hard and said our revenues are going to be this much money rather than what we've done in the past. We've, we've gone for years where we said we were going to, we were going to get in revenues, a million, sometimes a million and a half dollars less than what we collected. There were years that we estimated our revenue for the next year was less than the year, the year before. It didn't make any sense. And so, what would happen then is, this council, it made it easy for us to make decisions during the year, because we had a million bucks sitting out there, a million and a half bucks. So, we'd come up, we needed a new truck, buy a new truck. Need to make a, you know, increase the, because of the cost of health insurance, we had the money to do that. It was easy decisions to do. And then what happened is, we think we were not going to collect that money. Guess what we always did? Just nearly always did. And then what happened is, we take six million dollars of the citizens' money and stick it in the bank, of which we've, we've said, a good business is going to have three point one or three point two million bucks. And so, my problem is, we have taxed the citizens, in my opinion, to the tune of about three million dollars more than what our operational needs are. So, the question is, do we, like Mr. McDonnell says, do we get that back? We do have some obligations. We have not voted on them, so it's not official obligations. We have told that text dot aviation, is that what it's called? Text dot aviation and the FAA that we're going to extend a railroad, I mean, the airport runway. That's going to cost us about ten million dollars, I think, something like that, of which our portion is going, what is, is it seven million or ten million? I can't remember. It's a huge amount of money. And our portion's going to be about seven, anywhere from five hundred to a million, something like that, depends on property acquisition. Well, there's a million bucks. Let's say that could be potentially a million bucks we're going to spend. We've talked about the Bosque River Trail. Now, that's been a big, I've gotten tons of calls on both sides of that issue. But this council voted, decided that the Bosque River Trail expansion project was appropriate. We said that's going to run us about, our portion could, depending on acquisition of property, be a half million dollars. So, you put those two together, we're somewhere between a million two and a million five of things that we have said we need to do. Plus, we have three point two million dollars in reserve, I know, I hate the term reserves, revenue that's above our expenses. You put those together, we're coming close to five million dollars then of obligations we need to hold back. We've got about six million bucks in the bank. So, I think we're, you know, I think the issue is, we have about a million dollars now. What that means is, I've said it in the council and here, as well as in our work sessions, we're going to put our big board bridges on, because then, when some stuff comes across, like a truck breaks down, or a fire truck gets hit and flips over in a, in a accident, or something major happens, then all of a sudden, we've got a million dollar request out there, a half million dollar request, we're going to have to make some hard decisions. But you know what? It's what we get hired to do, is make those kind of decisions. So, I think the revenue's there. Brady, I understand what you're saying. And I do believe that there's needs out there. We could be taxing at sixty cents a hundred and not cover our needs.
Seventy cents.
I mean, because one cent is about a hundred thousand dollars. I mean, if you have four point nine million and forty-nine and a half cents on a hundred, it comes up with four point nine million, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a penny. So, a half penny, one way or the other, isn't going to make or break this budget. The problem is, and we've, I believe this council's done a great job, this budget process, of setting some money aside to actually start making some plans for street construction, for traffic, and analyzing our traffic, for doing things like annexation projects, look at all the things we, economic development. We've got some things going that in the next two years are going to come out and say, okay, now you need to do this. Now, the question's going to be, are we going to create the money that four A, four B, or type A, type B may be part of that? We're not going to get it done next two years. But also, if you'll remember, we have in the water department, and I think it's four years, Walt, did we pay off a note? Is it four?
Or, or, I believe it was two thousand seventeen or eighteen, I can't remember.
Two thousand nineteen. So, in five years, we have a debt, it's going to, we're, right now, we're spending about a million dollars a year debt that we're paying, or payment we're making, some of its debt, some of its interest, some of it's just paying off the, the capital itself. But there's a million bucks out there. And my fear is, this council, what we'll do is, we'll jump out and we'll say, man, we've got a million bucks. How much can we borrow? Let's go borrow ten million bucks. Let's borrow fifteen million bucks. Good, we've got a million bucks to pay. Now, that's the tough decisions we're going to have to make when those things happen. We have some opportunities, I think, this year, and I may get shot after I walk out of here. Chief, be with me. But I believe that we could afford a forty-nine cent tax, tax rate, say forty-nine and a half. I think we're going to, it may be brought back up next year, that it'll go back up, depending on what our needs are.
I've got one more comment there.
Great.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be very brief, unlike my, my colleague, two seats to the left of me.
Hush.
I'll bring a razor afterwards.
First off, you made the, my comment that we could raise the tax rate to sixty cents and still not do all the things we need to do in this city and provide all the services. And you're exactly right. We'll never raise the tax rate to sixty cents.
That's right.
It's not going to happen. So, I applaud this council for looking at this four A, four B economic structure, because if anyone remembers, a year ago, I walked into a committee meeting, and I brought the numbers of all the cities that were four A, four B, and the state of Texas, a TML report. And I brought it up, and a few members of the council looked at me like I was crazy and said, well, you can never do that. You can never have that conversation. Politically, you'll get, you'll get crucified. And I said, it doesn't matter, because we're never going to fix our problem until we get enough revenue in to grow our economy. And we're finally having this conversation. And I think it's a huge step in the right direction. And I applaud Mr. Wagner for, for, for taking the lead, the lead on that. And I hope you heard what Mr. Pendleton said, because he's exactly correct. We're sitting here talking about fifty thousand dollars. Look what Roanoke's talking about. We're, we're sitting here talking about fifty thousand dollars. And I'm going to vote for the, the gentleman's amendment, because I believe that, or the gentleman's motion, because I believe that the people know how to spend their money better than the government. We're still going to be able to fulfill our budgeted amount. So, I think it's a good amendment. But we're talking about fifty thousand dollars, when we could be talking about four or five million dollars that we can put back into our economy and put back into our streets and our infrastructure. So, with that, I'll yield my time.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion?
One quick comment from you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I think it's been said, stated several times, if not tonight, I know previously, that the, last year's tax increase maybe was unjustifiable, or we could not, you know, exactly determine how that money was needed to be spent. And so, I guess the question I propose tonight then would be, why not go back to forty-eight and a half cents? If the one cent last year was not needed, why are we here today talking about only a decrease of half a cent?
Mayor, may I answer that?
Sure.
To make things simple and easy to understand, Jerry Lee told us that after most of the tax rate protests, that the tax appraisal protests were settled, the city was going to be seeing about sixty-six thousand more dollars in revenues. Our financial director will tell us that we have ninety-eight percent collections. A half percent reduction in the current sales tax rate is about fifty thousand dollars. There shouldn't be any negatives. There shouldn't be a hard vote. And I agree with Casey. I believe the people should have that fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars in their wallets this Christmas to spend as they please, because I think that will help stimulate the local economy in itself. Mayor, I'm asking for a roll call vote.
All right.
Previous question?
Okay. What was the, was, I was getting a hand signal over here, and I wasn't catching it out of the corner of my eye.
He called, he called questions.
Okay, so we'll vote on the call to question. All those in favor of the call to question, this is to proceed to vote. That's why we're, we're doing this.
Yes.
Okay. So, in other words, this vote will either continue discussion or we'll close discussion.
Yes, sir.
So, all those in favor of the call to question, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, that motion carries. The call to question is-
Now, we're ready to vote.
Now, we're ready to vote.
Yes, sir.
So, we'll proceed then. Been requested a roll call vote. So, the motion before the council is to consider approving ordinance twenty fourteen, two, two, which is to adopt a tax rate of point four nine for twenty fourteen. We'll start with place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Place six.
Nope.
Place seven.
Aye.
Place eight.
Aye.
And, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I vote aye, which is eight to one, uh, one. That motion carries, adopting the tax rate for twenty fourteen.
Mayor?
Uh, I'm going to close discussion on this tonight myself. I want to say something that I hope will allow us to move forward on this issue. So, I'm going to start with a quote from C.S. Lewis, when he was in a theological debate about an issue. And he said, "We need to be careful not to ask ourselves how much, how many hours are in a mile, or whether yellow is square or round." And what did he mean by that? I think he meant, don't ask the wrong question, or conversely, let's make sure we ask the right question. I appreciate the discussion tonight about the tax rate, but I think the council has passed a budget that looks forward to defining requirements for our community in a, in a very important way, because it seeks to ask the question, what does our community need to prosper versus what does the tax rate need to be? And a subset of that question has been the introduction of this economic development question as well, which is, is tied to what our community needs. And so, the, the work that, that we as a council have, have endeavored to undertake over the last two months, the citizens of this community should feel encouraged by, I believe, because we, we have, I believe, begun to ask ourselves the hard questions. And to understand what, what should the pavement investment be in this community? What should we spend on infrastructure? And then, how does a capital improvement plan project revenue to pay for it? How, how do you bring those together? And so, the budget is the cornerstone of our ability as a council to execute the policy decisions that we seek to guide the community toward the future. The tax rate is, is a tool. And I think what I'm encouraging us as a council to do is, is to keep this momentum as we go into October and begin to, to grapple with what, how to shape some of these issues going into the budget for, for next year. Because those are, those are key decisions that are going to speak to levels of investment for operations and maintenance, so we ensure public safety, levels of investment for infrastructure. Just go back, everyone, and look at the six priorities that we laid out in this year's budget. We need to be able to have ironclad answers to those questions. And those six priorities can guide our budget then. So, with that, we'll, we'll move to what is, what's a, really a technical matter that's required for us to close the books for the previous year's budget. And that is to consider approval of an ordinance twenty fourteen, twenty-three, that will amend our budget to, as I said, balance the debits and credits. So, Walter, if you can, please go through that for us.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. You got time, Governor, Jim? Okay. Basically, for the year end, I need to appropriate, to appropriate approximately two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars to balance my budget. Of that amount, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is for general fund, and a hundred and eleven thousand dollars is from the water sewer fund. There's a lot of numbers in there. Well, basically, the majority of the number that I'm allocating, uh, I'm sorry, that, that a hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred dollars I'm doing for pay adjustments. So, that is basically the majority of these numbers that you have here in this ordinance. And it's a wash, in fact. I'm moving a hundred and thirteen thousand for the mid-year budget that we put into human resources. And I'm allocating it out throughout the budget to accommodate the pay raises that we're giving you, Matt. Other than that, I am appropriating for some additional expenditures that were not budgeted at mid-year. For example, city administrator, finance department, I've got seven thousand dollars for EMS collections, legal, seventeen thousand dollars for the attorney fees and court calls, municipal court. I've got the project with that. My fines and my revenues are up to accommodate that. Senior citizens center, I'm sorry, state regarding the street corner, I have sixteen thousand dollars for street signs, fire administration, twenty thousand dollars for the coast, new fire station. And then, basically, just some water repair down there in utility. So, basically, this is what I need to balance my budget for year end.
Okay, thank you, Walter. Any questions for Walter? All right, if not, I'll consider a motion.
Mayor, I move the approval ordinance twenty fourteen, twenty-three.
Second. Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Savin, seconded by Mr. Pendleton, to approve ordinance twenty fourteen, twenty-three, providing for the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote. Thank you, Walter. That's a lot of work goes into balancing that, so it may look easy. Duck's sitting on water. Don't look under the surface.
It's nice to do it and not have to take money from someplace.
All right, the next item on the agenda tonight is to consider approval of a search firm to, for the city administrator position. And I'll turn it over to Personnel Chair, Mr. Hoben.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Personnel Committee met last week with the, with really two purposes, to begin the selection process of a consulting firm to help us select our next city administrator, and to also solicit proposals for a consulting firm to help us fill an interim community development director position. Last month, the council, the council authorized the staff to, to begin this process. We had six firms that applied to help us select our city administrator. I think I speak for every, everyone on the Personnel Committee and on the council. All six firms were outstanding. They came with, with detailed proposals, excellent proposals. I think any of the six would have been, would have done a good job helping us select our next city administrator. And of course, helping us select by beginning the process, posting the job, vetting the applicants, and, and giving us a pool so the council can select from. They don't actually select the city administrator. Last week, we narrowed it down to two firms, Strategic Government Resources and Waters Consulting Firm. Both good proposals. SGR, Strategic Government Resources, is twenty-six thousand dollars. They're going to give us a thousand dollar discount if we use them for the community development director interim position. So, they'll give us a thousand dollars off their twenty-seven thousand. It would be twenty-six thousand. It's a three month process with both firms. SGR says they've done it as little as forty-five days and, and, and at the max, fifteen weeks, which I believe is a little under four months. Waters Consulting Firm, it's a three months, three months process. So, we can get three months with either firm. We've checked references on both. The mayor and the interim city administrator have checked references on both. All references check out to, to, to be excellent. When you look at Waters' proposal on page eighteen in your packet, their proposal is a little less. It's twenty-two thousand, five hundred. And these, these costs are all inclusive. So, this includes all of the costs that, that that consulting firm's going to provide. It does not include candidate costs. So, once we select six candidates to come to Stevieville to interview, that, that price is not included. We're going to have to eat the cost on that for the folks to come down here and, and interview. But it's all inclusive on the, on the consulting firm. And there are some additional fees that optional services, if we want, would be on top of the twenty-two, five hundred, and on top of the twenty-six thousand with SGR. And each of these firms provides a, what we would call a twenty-four month guarantee. So, if you hire a city administrator, and they were to leave, resign, or be fired within twenty-four months, then they'll come back at, at no cost. They'll, they'll charge you expenses, but they won't charge the consulting fee to come back and do that. And that's pretty standard with all six of these proposals. So, to make a long story short, we've examined both of these. The committee, each member of the committee recommends Strategic Government Resources. of the committee recommends Strategic Government Resources. We believe that their proposal was just a little more detail-oriented. The feedback from the staff was that they were the best to work with, they communicated the best, and so, we're gonna recommend that we use SGR, and with that, I'll ask for, Mayor, if you'll recognize, Mr. Nix would like to make a motion.
All right, Mr. Nix.
Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize you to enter into an agreement with SGR to help us with our search and recruitment for a new city administrator.
Your second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Nix, seconded by Mr. Hogan, to approve the contract with Strategic Government Resources. Any discussions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries unanimous vote, and I really appreciate the committee's work on that, and got right on it, we gotta partner now to move on with this, and it's gonna be a great opportunity for us. So, move on to the next agenda item.
Mayor, if I might interject here, I appreciate Pat's work, because Pat did a tremendous amount of work to put these proposals together for us, so that we would have, have a good quality that we did to look through, and I appreciate his work on that.
That's duly noted, that you're right.
Yeah, that was a lot of good information in a hurry, I appreciate it.
It was fast, too.
All right. All right, the item six on the agenda is to consider a contract for, so, Mr. Hogan, you wanna discuss that?
Yeah, and I just wanna echo Mr. Nix's comments, this is by far the busiest time of year for me and my job, and Mr. Bridges and the mayor really played an instrumental role in helping the committee out, so, and we did this in an efficient manner, so I appreciate their leadership in this matter. The second item of business was to solicit a consulting firm or a group or company to help us fill this immediate need. It's urgent to have an interim community development director, Ms. Chu, no longer here, Mr. Bridges, expertise obviously not in community development, so there's a, there's a, an immediate need to get someone in here that can, that can fill that need, and we had a few proposals, and I think originally there was five, and then it got weeded down, a couple of them dropped out, so we didn't have as much selection on this end. But the committee feels that the best proposal, really the only proposal to even look at, is Strategic Government Resources. Keep in mind that our city charter, we're only allowed as a council to hire and fire the city manager, city secretary, and city attorney, so really, this decision, at the end of the day, maybe from appropriation end is ours, but, but from a personnel end is the interim city administrator's decision, and his recommendation is to use SGR. So, Mayor, I'll make a motion that we authorize the mayor to enter into agreement with Strategic Government Resources to hire an interim community development director.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Hogan, seconded by Mr. McDonald, to authorize the mayor to enter into contract with Strategic Government Resources to hire an interim community development director. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, that motion carries a unanimous vote, and talk about effective and efficient management on the part of our interim administrator. We have here tonight with us, and Chief, I'll let you introduce Ms. Judy Miller from SGR.
Mayor and council, it's my pleasure to recommend to introduce our new interim community development director, Ms. Judy Miller. Judy, if you'll come to the podium and tell a little bit about yourself and give Mayor and council opportunity to-
The council is extremely wonderful, my heart is beating with you, and Stevieville has always had a wonderful place in my heart, beautiful city, just a beautiful city. And I came here about one o'clock today, and then busy with staff and really the city, and got the mayor with it again, and I'm just extremely happy to be here, I appreciate your confidence in me, and I'm here to help, in whatever capacity you need me, and certainly for whatever time you need me. The information that SGR provided for you in the budget, slightly off, just a little bit, I have forty-three years, twenty-three years of experience, and, so, I just wanted to know, it's not a small business, but extremely happy to be selected and that way.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we're excited and encouraged to have you onboard. When we were looking at firms to select, they provided different resumes from candidates, and one of the things that stood out was not only your experience in community development and being able to help us with that process, but also your prior experience as a city manager will lend itself to, to help our interim administrator with fielding other questions as well. So, we're excited about the depth and breadth of your experience and look forward to you being onboard.
Thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate that. You know, every city manager has their strong suit, whether it be finance, public records, etc. Of course, mine is, being, you know, almost twenty years in Odessa, I was trying to plan inspection, it's been a wild year. I can't say it's as wild as it is going through now, but that city, they, that boom was just extremely wonderful and exciting, you know, it was, I'm here to help.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
All right, your second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, this meeting's adjourned at six forty-seven, and we will reconvene with the Public Works Committee.
And Mayor, first, you got the meeting for you.
Oh, okay.
I am headed to-
I've got a-
You get it every day, Mom.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're supposed to make someone else out there.
All right, we can handle this.
I've got to be there twelve minutes.
I gotta stop, hey, I gotta stop thinking that I'm in Congress, I always say, "The gentleman," and then I say, "I yield my time," because I'm so used to that, but you don't yield your, you know.